All right, we're going to call the order, the work session for the Coaches County Board of Supervisors. We're meeting in here, the supervisors' hearing room in Melody Lane. Soon ARS 38431.02H, public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Coaches County Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or by telephone, or by Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend via Microsoft Teams. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items and elected officials. We don't have that written in there, but county staff and other elected officials. To discuss agenda items on the Board of Supervisors. And public comments will not be taken during this meeting. We'll begin with a roll call, District One, District Two, District Three, and some areas here. All three supervisors are present and in person. And we'll go to Ms. Gilman, who will lead off with the agenda item of reviewing the budget for the county assessor's office.
We have our Dean County Assessor here, Phil Weindicker. And this is one of the budget meetings that I always look forward to because I always learn something about how we assess our values in the state and in the county and the impact it has on the county budget. No pressure there, but you know. I always learned something, so whatever you wanted to teach us today.
Good, it's all yours, Phil.
Mr. Chairman, board members, before I get started, I'd like to introduce some of my staff here, my administration here. Felix Dagnino right here is my chief deputy. He's been with me for 29 years. He's been chief deputy for almost 23 years. He started as an appraiser, Level Two Certified Appraiser, and he's where he's at now. Maureen Fandos is my acting administrative assistant. She was with me for 11 years, then retired back in September of '23. I hired someone else and they got hired away from me, so she's agreed to come back part-time to fill in.
Oh, that's cool. Yeah, thanks for doing that.
We're glad to have her back.
Do you get back on the pension route or off the pension route? Okay, okay, so you're still good, you're not getting. Retiree, retiree rehiring.
Shannon James is one of my top hands, technical support administrator. She started 12 years ago. And she basically runs our data processing, our system that does the entire assessment role. So she's valid, valid key person in my administration. She started as an appraiser, Level Two Certified, and then she's worked into where she's at right now. And then Shannon Romero is the other technical support administrator I have. She started as an appraiser, Level Two Certified Appraiser, and now she's running the entire office as far as the office manager. So these are the key people that make it happen in my office. I just show up and look good. They make me look good, yes. So briefly, what I want to do is we can talk briefly about our actual budget. Our actual budget is pretty simple. You know, we've asked for a few changes, a few increases. Basically, about 98% of my budget is mandated statutory function. Very little of it is discretionary. What increases we have asked for are basically, it's like postage. Postage and printing for our office is a significant factor because we have to print and mail all these notice of values, notice of changes.
That's going to go up now that the post office is.
Well, that's what's hard, that's what's hard to figure out, so we figured in some extra there, a little bit of increase. That's printing and postage. Our operating lease is our 428.0 line item. That's basically the cost of our data processing system.
There it is, there it is again. Look at the price tag on that.
It'll get you that. It's one that's been a trigger today.
It's a trigger, I'm a, that's a.
It's not against you guys, it's just, God, we're paying so much money in these licenses.
Yeah, I call it the black hole because once you, once you sign on, it just.
And they always think.
But one of the things that we have that's an oddball, we have an extra $60,000 on this year's budget because our primary realware provider transitioned from a fiscal year to a calendar year. So we had an extra six months added on that we had to add on to this role.
But then you just got to six months up for the next year.
Yeah, yeah, get washed, but we have to.
But you had to eat it in one year, it looked bad.
Yeah, we have to eat it this year.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha.
So, so other than that, we're very uneventful. That's basically what we're looking at. In addition to all the extra money and salaries that you'll keep providing. And, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but I've got a PowerPoint I just kind of want to walk through briefly. I'd like to use this time just basically to give you some insight about what the assessor's office does, what we're doing, why we're doing it, where we're at. On the second page of PowerPoint, our primary statutory duties, basically, as I mentioned, basically everything we do is previously dictated. We're generating an annual property assessment role, runs the, the whole property tax system. And basically, I always chuckle when we look at our, our budget worksheet because our revenue projected is about 25,000. It's like nothing is ever mentioned about property taxes as being.
Of what you're generating.
A generation from what we do, but in reality, basically what we do is generate the tax rule. And of course, maintaining the current ownership, accurate maps, and establishing a full cash value every year is, is that charge that we have to do. And our values are measured annually by the Department of Revenue by a sales ratio program that we'll get into. But what we do is measured and we have to meet certain specific standards to maintain our values.
Yeah, you're like supposed to statutorily, like every five years, you're supposed to physically go out to every property, right? Or something like that?
Well, I will, I will, and I have consistently told the boards in the past that I cannot physically complete all my statutory mandates. Simply, I don't have the manpower.
So is that what the statute says, though?
We're supposed to, every three, every, every three years, we're supposed to reappraise. And in fact, we do regenerate values every year based on market. So in essence, when we do our market adjustments and change values to reflect the market, that basically is, is in compliance there. We're supposed to review 25% of all of our ag parcels every year, too. So that's a, that's an ongoing issue that we're working on.
So once every four years again.
We're making progress, but that's, that's a tough. That's a lot of man hours in the field. So plus we have all of the evaluations that go out, we have appeals that are generated from those, and we have personal and organizational exemptions that we have to process. We have senior freeze properties that we have to process. And then we have to do all of the BOE hearings, et cetera, et cetera. So when we get through that with that, then we have to then run our final net assessed valuations and report to all of the different taxing generations, jurisdictions. The next page, you can see, basically, we report to all of the different taxing jurisdictions, of course, the county, the college, seven town cities, 23 school districts, two hospital districts, 16 fire districts, five streetlight improvement districts, three water improvement districts, and about 28 other special districts. So we have to report net assessed values to each one of these taxing jurisdictions. They go through the same budget process the county does. So we're, we're an intricate part of that whole process with all these different taxing jurisdictions. So we're kind of in the mix with, with everybody when it comes to this issue. The next page there, assessor staff positions, basically gives you an outline of what we're. We've got 36 full-time positions, Captain myself. Right now I've got eight vacancies. That's almost 25% of my staff. But you know, we, we get filled out and then things happen, you know? When a gal met her boyfriend in Indiana, she's gone, you know? Someone else, they start a business and they, they stop because they can't hire employees. So she went to work for, with her husband in their business.
Must have went to another department.
Went to another department, which her predecessor went to highway department, you know, engineers. We lost an appraiser to engineers. I've lost, in the last few years, I've lost eight people to the engineers and, you know.
We heard about poaching, we heard about poaching.
It feels like a training facility for Coaches County, you know? But, but the reality is, that's what happens. But.
But you got that one cartographer, though.
Yes.
That's a foreign guy, right? He keeps all the maps.
Yeah. Yeah, and our vacancies, I mean, when we come down to our appraisal staff, you know, you have to have your appraisers in the field to pick stuff up, that, that's a, those are key, key positions. The next, the next page basically is.
Let me ask you a question, I'm sorry, Phil. Do you have the statutory authority to go on people's property like surveyors do? Can you, can you go on their property to look at stuff or?
Yeah.
What's the rule on that?
We do. We have the authority to go on to the property to do the property assessment. However common, if the property owner requests us to leave, we will. And we will, at that point in time, notify them that we will make an assessment based upon an estimate. And good or bad, that estimate is what we'll fly with, you know? We don't. I have never, some of the county assessors are using drones to do stuff. And I don't really agree with that too much.
Still do the tape measures.
That's pretty invasive. I mean, we want to go on it, on the property, talk to the people. And we use the aerial imagery a lot.
To go look.
Well, actually, actually, some of the aerial imagery, if, if a lot of the rural properties, if they got locked gates, we leave business cards. And we, we try to follow, and, and that's a, a sore point with a lot of property owners. They want to be contacted before we come up on the property. But that's near impossible to do. You know, 30 years ago, you had a phone book and you'd call people up. You know, now it's near impossible to contact people via phone. And we don't have contact information on most property owners. And we basically show up, do our job, and leave a card. We, we always stand procedure, leave a card before we do anything. So if they show up and we're there, we can show proof that we were on the property. We went to the front door, left a card, notified them we're not sneaking around. But for the most part, people are understanding, you know? But it's always an issue, it's a safety issue, especially in the more remote areas that I try to keep my people alert, you know, if they question back out.
We're a big bright red shirt assessor across the back.
Well, you know, we have county vehicles and they're marked, which, which helps. I've had appraisers, I've had people pull shotguns on my guys before. But, but the fact of the matter is, with a county-marked vehicle, you go in the front, you know, pop the horn, you're horned and let them know you're there, generally it's, it's not a problem. The aerial imagery, though, is, is the most significant improvement to property assessment that we have had in the last forever 30 years. Because we can have access to looking at property and having an idea of what's there. The imagery is pretty good. Some of it's like two or three years old. But in rural areas, man, it helps. Where you can get in and behind locked gates, you can at least see how many structures there, you can kind of tell what they are. You can get pretty good measurements from the air, better than not having anything. But that's, that's a valid, very valid tool for us. But as far as the full cash value, I gave you a five-year history. Currently, full cash value right now is $13,527 million. We're up almost 6% from last year. And this is an ongoing, you know, county's growing and we're out there picking stuff up all the time. It's what we do. The, it's awkward in that we're dealing with the 2025 values here. The 2026 assessment role has already been put together. We've notified people, we're dealing with 2026 valuations, assessment, appeals right now. And at the same time, staff is working on 2027 reappraisal. So we've, we've got a three-year role here coming through, so it's more than.
I was going to say that I've watched you present many times on a variety of different issues. Off the top of your head, when it comes to these various appeals where they go to court or not, or they just come to your office, do you, is it like 50/50? Sometimes you end up increasing their valuation and sometimes when they appeal or complain or something like that, you will decrease their valuation or is, what would you say the ratio is between, okay? Something comes to your attention, whether it's a court case, somebody's actually suing you, like you, like we talked about how someone big come, oh, they just sue you, kind of automatically. But what I was going to say was, I've never seen you do anything that I, that I thought was being greedy on behalf of the county, y'all being fair. What do you think the ratio is of the times that you've increased versus the times that you've decreased?
On standard appeals, I would say probably at least 90%, there's no change. Is that a fair statement?
On our notice of value appeals. On 90%, on a notice of change appeal is probably about 20% because a lot of those are.
The notice of change is, is when we pick up things at the very end of the year, by September 30th, and we have new construction and we're trying to get that picked up. I've said with a really short turnaround. So we pick up a lot of stuff with a permit value. And, and there's more room for, for adjustments there when they appeal. If we couldn't get to the property, we'll go ahead and put the value on it based upon a permit. So, but, but generally, you know, very few changes on most valuation appeals. And if we, if we go out on an appeal and we discover something's assessed that's, that's escaped assessment, we will have to pick it up. I mean, we don't have the authority to look the other way and say, oh, that's exempt this year. So we always tell people when they come to the counter or we're talking on the phone, you know, file an appeal. We will come out and review your property. And it's kind of hilarious sometimes because they about yank the appeal out of your hand. Because, let me think about this, let me think about this. Because really, I honestly tell them, I said, you file an appeal, make sure you're, know what you're doing because we're going to come out and review the property, you know? And, but, but that's a reality that, you know, that happens once in a while. And people are a little upset, but we explain to them, you know, if it's there, it's got to be assessed, we can't look the other way. So, but for the most part, people are very understanding and they know. And, you know, as long as you're shooting straight with them and it's a good value, they basically can accept it.
Okay, the other thing that I'd like to mention is that not only is your office a fundamental function of government, but one of the, between you and the treasurer's office, you guys are the only ones that are bringing money in of all, of all the, of all the departments that we have to work. So in my opinion, like the recorder, we should not sprinkle on Phil's office.
Well, and, and I will, I appreciate that, but I will say one thing. We don't need a lot. What we need is salaries, A, to keep our qualified people and B, the more manpower I have, the more I can do.
I understand.
That, that's a reality of, of, you know, getting the job done.
I would emphasize those facts to my colleagues. So. So we, or duly noted.
The next page is talking about the limited property value. And the limited property value actually is what the tax bill is actually based on, the tax rule is actually based on. And basically, that's at $10,921 million. It's up about almost 6% also. Again, the limited property value is restricted on how much it can increase every year. And if a parcel does not change more than 15% in its value as far as new construction or whatever, it has to, it's restricted only a 5% increase on that limited value each year. If there's a change to the footprint of the structure or new construction or, or legal class change, anything that affects more than 15%, then it's more than a 5% increase. And that allows us to capture new construction and, and adjust that limited value based upon what has changed on the property. The next page, the full cash valuation breakout. Basically, I broke this out to give you an idea of how the, the values in the county are broken out. Locally assessed land is basically the, the land value that we handle here. That represents about 21% of the total assessment role. Locally assessed improvements with basically structures, be they homes, business buildings, whatever, represents about 70% of the, of the full cash value. Personal property, which is commercial personal property, for the most part, represents about 2%. And then centrally valued property represents 7%. Now, in this mix, it's my position that the centrally valued property, that is handled by the Department of Revenue. Now, you have to understand, Arizona Department of Revenue is the sole person, entity responsible for valuing all utilities, mines, communication systems in the state. They have, what, two or three appraisers to do this? It is a huge job, but centrally valued properties is all self-reported valuations. It's strictly on a statutory income valuation methodology. And there's no oversight other than the Department of Revenue.
And big corporations have lawyers and they're going to sue you.
As we learned the couple of weeks ago.
Yes, so, so the reality is, the reality is that as we go through here, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about this, but the assessed values of properties have been continually being dropped down. And centrally valued properties, like I say, there's no overwatch on that process. The department has sole control of that. In fact, they hold that information totally confidentially. I cannot access that information about any of the values that are submitted or the income data that was submitted to them by the individual entities. In fact, about 15, 20 years ago, we had a case where I needed some of that information and I actually had to sue the Department of Revenue to get that information. So that information is held real close to the vest by the Department of Revenue and there's no oversight. Now, what makes it sticky right now is the fact that the Department of Revenue has no dog in this fight. They get no revenue from this. So it would be like me running the assessment valuations in Colorado for another state. And I have, I get nothing out of it, but I'm responsible for doing it. I was actually personally told by Assistant Director of the Department of Revenue about seven or eight years ago that they intentionally backed off on the valuation levels on centrally valued because they were spending too much money and too much time in tax court. So when you understand they have nothing to gain and everything to lose as far as sticking with good values, it's, it's not conducive to having a lot of confidence of what we're getting from them. You know, so we're trying to, we need to put a more emphasis on monitoring centrally valued, but there's very little we can do right now with, with the way it's set up. So. That's, now, now the, the situation is even more difficult because Arizona Tax Research Association.
ADTR.
Is a, ADTR is a huge lobby.
Kevin McCarthy.
Kevin McCarthy, bam, thank you. You know him, you.
I know.
You know the power they wield in Washington, in Vegas. They, basically, all I could do is challenge anybody that questions this. Go to ADTR's website and look up Board of Directors and see who's on the Board of Directors.
No, it's like APS and.
Southwest Gas and, yeah, South River Project, Arizona Public Service, Horizon Corporation, Tucson Electric Power, Freeport Metro-Ran, Apple Inc., American Airlines, Central West, I mean, all the big dogs are there. And, and they're pushing to get assessment rates down. Centrally valued properties used to have a 60% assessment rate. And they've argued that they should be equal to other commercial properties.
The problem is what we talked about earlier, where Maricopa County gets all their money from Palabury Nuclear Power Plant because the value of that plant is off the chart. So APS goes in there and says, you know, this is disproportionately unfair because of the cost of this infrastructure. You're assessing me at a commercial property rate when I'm, and, and that's what he's talking about. And so they, they got all these big utilities go in there and they knock down the commercial assessment.
But they don't, what they don't bother saying, though, is the valuation methodology for centrally valued is entirely different from all other commercial properties. All other commercial properties are valued at market value. Centrally valued have statutory valuation methodology that's preferential that these normal commercial properties don't have. So, you know, the saying is, best laws, tax laws, money can buy.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, that's how it appears. So we'll go to the next page. And this is basically our sales ratio report for this last 2026 assessment role with our values that, with the notice of due sent out. This is basically a function of the Department of Revenue monitoring our values. The, the county has broke out into basically nine market areas. And we break our land values and our residential and commercial properties out by these market areas. And as you can see, basically, Tombstone, Bisbee, Sierra Vista, Benson, St. David, Wilcox, here's Ash Creek, Douglas, Sofa Springs Valley, Louis and San Simo are the individual nine market areas. The median is the, the ratio between the median selling price and the full cash value. And you can see what we're targeting, we're supposed to be around the 80, 82% is what we try to target. And you can see what our ratios are running for land and for improvements, residential. County-wide residential is 77%, county-wide land is 76%. Commercial is on the bottom, it got cut off, but commercial is at 84% county-wide. So you can see kind of where our values are at, where we're measured every year to keep our valuation levels in relation to actual market value. But that market value, that's, that's a function of every recorded affidavit value that's recorded goes into the system and we use that as, and break those out obviously by market, sub-market area to measure what the selling prices are. And then our values are measured to those parcels that sell to see where we're at. The next page is basically a breakout on commercial property. This is, this is more of a, just a snapshot to give you an idea. A lot of these ratios aren't, don't look good, but a lot of them, you see where there's maybe just one or two sales where you don't have a good sales sampling to get an idea of where you're at on the, on the median. But for the most part, right now, we've got a project on commercial properties getting our values converted over to our new cost system that we've been working on for several years. And that will help our values considerably. If you go to the next page, I've got a, basically a 45-year assessment rate history, which basically shows you where the assessment rates have what they were back in 1980 to where they are now. And you can see where, you know, centrally valued has dropped 73%. Railroads dropped 6%, commercial properties dropped 41%. Standard commercial property used to be assessed 27%, now it's down to 16%. It's dropping to 15 and a half percent for 26 and down to 15% for 27. So continually dropping the assessment rate on properties, we, we work real hard to capture value as far as full cash value, but the legislature then drops the assessment rate. So we keep losing ground, you know, it's like you're bailing water out of the Titanic, you know, it's like, we keep working, but we're losing ground when, when the legislature institutes structural reductions in, in that assessed value. And that's basically, when you look at the overall, if, if that hadn't been changed, the amount of assessed value that we would have, tax rates could be easily dropped to, to, to have something to work with. But that's not where we're at. But, that's not where we're at. Also there on the bottom of that page, I gave a breakout of where our county tax rate, and I'm sure you've, you've got that information.
Hundred and sixty-five percent, it's college?
Yes. In nineteen eighty, their tax rate was a dollar forty-eight, and now it's two forty-four. This is one of the issues that...
That was what everybody was screaming about. Everybody was crying about their property taxes going up, trying to blame the Board of Supervisors for raising their property tax.
Thank you. That, that happens so much, and we get nailed, my office staff, you know, you always get this, property taxes are going up. But, but the reality is, you know, what the county does, well, that's a good comparison. Look at the college. The services provided to every single citizen of the, of the county, by the county, is pretty significant. The services provided by every member of the county by the college is really limited.
And it's even more limited because they shrunk it all to one place, basically, it might be a claim.
But when you, when, when people say, well, the tax rates keep going up, in reality, the county has been kind of like the orphan stepchild. The rates haven't gone up much, but all of the other tax addition, if you look at some of the, the school rates, and some of the fire districts, their rates, they fluctuate a lot. And, and some of the school rates, you know, for whatever reason, keep going up, and it's like...
Well, they're doing budget overrides.
Yeah. But, but, you know, property taxes are a sore point for a lot of people. And I, and I basically tell people, look at, be careful what you ask for if you want to get rid of property tax from one standpoint. You basically have three sources of taxes.
Yeah.
You have bill tax, you have income tax, and you have property tax. Now, your sales tax is collected, sent to Phoenix, legislature establishing a formula to read dispute, right? Okay, your income tax, you got the federal government involved with that. If you look at your, your property tax, every single cent basically stays in the county. And you have taxing jurisdictions, that you have board members making judgment calls on that. You've got the hospital districts, you've got the school districts, you've got the fire districts, you've got you folks, the board. Every one of these taxing jurisdictions, you can go talk to. It's like, you have an impact on your property tax whether you know it or not, whether you exercise that. Most people don't think about exercising that. If you go to a school board meeting for budgets, no one shows up. You will see how many people show up for a budget meeting here, not very many, generally, because there's a disconnect between property tax and the, and the budgets and the spending census. Of course, when they file an appeal, they generally come to us, that's easy, easy solution for a property tax for one person, you know, is to challenge your value. But the reality is that a lot of the taxing jurisdictions, it's like, it's like the college rate, that's almost as high as the county rate. And when you think about that, the amount of services the county provides, way better. The county hasn't increased the rate very much in the last forty-five years, but...
I have a profound comment, Mr. O'Callaghan. I would like to remind my colleagues that all special districts, we vote to approve their rates in August, all over the county, benefit from an increase in the assessor's evaluation. So, what is there? How many special districts?
Oh, no, twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Yeah. All, whatever it is. We, and all special districts, need to be extremely cautious that the increase in property values are not simply destruction of the currency. In other words, as the Fed goes out there and prints more currency, the value of the currency goes down, and hence, it looks like houses, houses and all these property that are getting taxed are going up, but really, the, the currency is getting destroyed. So, to have a strong economy, you need a strong currency, and you need anti-inflationary monetary policy, anti-inflationary monetary policy, to keep your currency strong. And I believe that that, that applies not only to the county, or not only the federal government, but the, but the county also.
With the, and the Coach's College, the board, or whatever they call them, foundation, they're the ones...
Governing Board.
What?
The governing board?
The governing board decides that they're going to increase, right?
Right.
And then we don't have any say, you just collect that for them, right?
Well, I, we, I can refer something to the ballot if we want. Well, but they get an automatic two percent increase, virtually automatically, because of some, was it Proposition One, Two, Three, or something like that, where you can only increase it, or something like that, as a proposition that, that made it on the ballot and passed for schools and a lot of other entities.
Yeah, there's a statute, statutory formula there that they have to follow. But basically, we report to them, they, they levy against the same net assessed value as what the county does, because they cover the whole county.
This is outrageous, I mean, it's outrageous, their increase in, like you said, the services that we provide versus...
Have you ever seen any college board member on a ballot?
No.
No.
And you don't even, I mean, I know you, it's hard to find out where they meet, it's hard to find them.
How long are their terms?
Like, seven, eight years.
Six years.
And then they just get re...
Well, yeah, they, they keep appointing each other, and nobody knows that they exist.
Nobody knows, yeah, exactly.
So, they, they, they like perpetuate themselves, and unless somebody, well, we lost Eli, Eli ran for the college board, where'd he go? There he is outside, that's our, that's our...
Or if you ask questions, then you're, you're labeled as trouble.
Not a team player.
Yeah, I'm a promoter of a...
If you want to do it, you can, you can refer a cap to the ballot, and direct that they're not allowed to charge over a certain dollar amount. The legislature does it to us, we can do it to them.
Because this is unbelievable, because this is the one complaint that I hear, Douglas, is look at how much we pay for this Coach's College, and look at that.
It's part of the reason why we're the fifth highest tax county in the state.
And these guys don't have any, I don't think they have any real understanding.
If you look at our actual property taxes, we're one of the lowest counties in the state, but this is, this kind of stuff is what JAPs are...
And, and see, that's, that's the point I would like to, is the fact that the county itself, tax rate is like a stepchild.
Yeah.
We're living on beans.
Right.
But these other taxing jurisdictions are living on steak, and it's like, no one notices. And, and similar...
The tax bill comes from Traywick, and they all, they automatically think that that's, you know, even though...
The assessor is out of control, and it's...
She's got a pipe chart, she didn't used to have a pipe, that's a good thing.
Too bad we can't take, we have an IGA to, what's the mechanism, an authority to collect their tax for them?
Yeah, I, it's in this, I'm sure it's in statute somewhere, as to that the county has to, the county treasurer collects the tax for all districts in the county.
Twenty years ago, there was a legislator up in Phoenix, he also used to say, Arizona does not have a taxing problem, it has a spending problem.
Well, it's always, everybody says that.
And, and, and you know, that's a reality of...
But this is just out of control.
Somebody should do so.
You can put, if you guys want, we can have a work session, and we'll put a, put a cap on it.
I do, I, I...
Or we could, or, or if you want, we could, this will be in the paper tomorrow.
Yep.
We could put it, we could put it on to just...
It's going to close Coach's College.
Yeah.
It's already closed, Douglas.
But I mean, you could, you could cap it, you can put a, put a cap.
I think it's worth people understanding that this is not what we do, this is what this board, governing board does.
Sure.
And it's going up a hundred and sixty-five percent, and then sit there and think what they've gotten for it. Especially, and, and, and this was all supposed to be for...
Pay for service, they should be using tuition to pay for it.
Well, they get tuition too.
I know, not, not, not the taxes.
It's not like Old Harbor, but you know what I mean?
And they have students coming over from, from...
I agree, to, to go to college.
No, now that I've started, you know, the next, the next page basically just gives a forty-five year of what the county rate has been, and it did go up in around two thousand at two point nine, and then came back down. So, there's been some fluctuation, but not a lot, not a lot.
No.
No, not at all.
The last page basically is just my on the horizon reference as far as what we have on our plate in the assessor's office down the road. They have one staff development hiring, and getting appraisers certified, and trying to keep the staff at hundred percent. New construction is always a priority in our, in our job task, because getting new construction on the assessment roll is mandatory. You know, we treat it as triage. That's the most important thing we can do, is get new construction on the assessment roll, because we can't have stuff out there that's, that's not picked up, and, and that's a priority. We use building permits, we use, you know, physical inspection, we use aerial imagery, everything, every tool that we have, we use to, to identify and find new construction and escape property. The commercial property cost conversion that we mentioned earlier is ongoing. Land reappraisal is an ongoing process, because we have a lot of land in this county, a lot of parcels, and basically, right now, we're working with basically one and a half appraisers working land. But the reappraisal process is pretty detailed, because when you come into land appraisal, it, it's one of the most true appraisal functions that we do, because we have to get sales data, and, and based upon the type of property, location, the appraiser actually has to make, put together sales, and put together analysis, and make established values that will fit a large range of property that we can defend in court and appeal, and, and that's a challenge. I mean, there's a lot to do there. So, land appraisal is an ongoing process. The mobile home reappraisal process, I mentioned a couple of months ago, that's, that's on our, our plate as far as getting, changing how we're assessing mobile home properties, because we're not getting the job done, and, and the current methodology, the statute allows for two types of appraisal methodology for mobile homes. You can have the, the, basically, the purchase price, acquisition price, and it's depreciated by a standard depreciation schedule. That's what we're using, that's what most of the state uses, but it's not working because it's not staying up with current market. The Department of Revenue is supposed to be changing that depreciation schedule every year.
Yeah, because they, they turn around, they sell, they sell the property with the mobile home, and the price, they sell it for a higher...
So, we're going to convert to a methodology of valuing mobile homes on a square foot basis, where we can actually capture actual market value of mobile homes.
You're going to hear some screaming there.
Which, which, there is, but it's got to be done, because it's not fair and equitable the way it is right now.
Yeah, to other property owners, and...
Yeah. So, and the final, the final bulletproof there is getting some resolution to some of our tax court cases, where we've only got like two or three pending cases now. We've got, of course, the one big case involving the orchards and the vineyards, that case was actually involving sixteen big operators, over ninety-six parcels. That we lost at the court of, Superior Court at tax court level, that's being appealed, and that's in the Court of Appeals right now. I feel very confident that we're going to be successful in that appeal, Court of Appeals. If, no matter what happens, if we can win that, this will have statewide significance. And if we lose it, it will require us to go to the legislature and actually get some statutory changes. But I, I think we're, we're pretty confident that where we're at, that we have a real solid position, and the Court of Appeals, the trial judge, or the, the court, at the tax court levels, the judge, pretty much out in the left field. So, we think we're in good shape for that. We've got a couple of other court cases we're looking on, but by and large...
Do you, do you hire your own attorney for that, or do you use Zuko's attorneys?
We use Kenny Turner's office, and, and that's the way we've always done it. We, we've, we have not in the past, only, only once or twice in the past thirty years, have we actually hired fee appraisers or expert witnesses for us. We haven't done that so far, but we're working with a guy right now, he's, he's not being hired as actually a full fee appraiser to appraise the properties, but he's acting as a, an expert witness for us to review the other appraisals that are done by the appellant. So, you know, down the road, our budget, we may be having to ask for some money for an expert witness once in a while. We haven't, I haven't asked to create a line item for that, simply because we've done it, like I say, what, once, maybe in the last thirty years, so it doesn't happen very often. If it does happen, it would be something that we would need to do. But, you know, I don't want to put ten thousand dollars in a line item that we'll never use. But if the time comes where we have to pull the trigger on that, you know, FYI, we may be asking for some...
Something the county treasurer could bring up, too.
Yeah, yeah. But by and large, the last page is the best page, the end. So, I'm sure at this point of the day, you folks are all asking yourselves, can I fuck for this job?
Somebody, somebody, somebody's got to, somebody's got to do it, but again, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you so much.
It's always...
I always learn something, didn't I?
Yeah, I always learn something, just...
And thanks, because I see...
So you got Gomez wound up on the community college, yeah.
I do, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm... Do we have a lot of absentee landlords, you know, in Coach's County, no one kind of knows, but is it?
Yes. Well, simply because we have a lot of these dormant subdivisions, like Scars and Sunlights, thousands and thousands and thousands of lots that were marketed back in the sixties and seventies, and these people were all back east or Midwest or at different places, and, you know, they bought it...
Nevada.
And then they were passed on to kids and grandkids, and people forgot, forgot about them, or quit paying taxes on them, and so, so we have a high percentage of that, yes.
This has been really helpful.
Hey, after we're done, if I can get you out in the foyer out there for five minutes, just to chat with you about something.
And can I, I just wanted to follow up, not now, but later, about hospital districts, you would be able to tell me which, where they are, and...
Yeah, we just have the two hospital districts, we have the Benson and Wilcox, North Coast Chiefs County, and the San Pedro Hospital District.
So what district did Douglas, you know, the hospital district that CMAC was in?
I don't think they ever had one on there.
We never had an actual, there was a county hospital.
Yeah.
But that was just county, that wasn't a district per se.
Yeah.
Interesting, so it never was an established one?
No.
There's like a couple of mobile homes north of where the border patrol station is now, again, okay.
Well, no, I was thinking...
But there was actually out by Plantation Road or whatever it is.
No, that CMAC is out there.
Yeah, the old county hospital.
I had thought that, I mean, that may be wrong, but we had gotten a lot of statistics, we were certain, you know, we were a hospital district is what I was told, so maybe it was just wrong.
Yeah, that was actually the county hospital, you know...
Right.
When I was in it.
Right, so, I'm trying, and we don't have, and there was something done somewhere along the line that renegotiated, that it wasn't one, but if we do a county hospital, I just, I'll just talk to you about some...
Sure, that he says we're supposed to have a county hospital.
Yeah, and a county farm, too.
Yeah.
Farm?
Yeah.
Yep. But thank you so much, Sean, for your contribution. And thank you for having people in the office, Douglas.
Yeah.
Because I see them there, and...
All right. Well, back here, I already put the damn sheet out. Tomorrow morning, what time?
It's like...
Nine, nine o'clock?
It is tomorrow, the first meeting is at nine o'clock for the Public Works Discussion. And all your fleet answers.
All my fleet answers will be answered, questions will be answered.
Marion Office.
Yeah, at ten, at ten, sorry.
Oh, it's at ten? At ten, okay, all right, so, no, no other questions? We will meet tomorrow at ten AM to discuss...
Make sure we need the money for salaries.
All right, so that's it, we're adjourned.